This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, so we're good to go, council. We are through our technical difficulties. So we had it moved by Belinda Kistemaker, second by Peter Kistemaker. Be it resolved that we do call this regular meeting of council to order on Wednesday, September 22nd, 2021 at 6:00 PM. Those in favor? And that is carried. Okay, the first, the second item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda and any changes to the agenda. If I can get a mover and a seconder, please. Drago and Belinda. Moved by Drago Stefanik, second by Belinda Kistemaker. Be it resolved that council does hereby approve the agenda as presented. Those in favor? And that is carried. None opposed. Item number four, council, is disclosure of peonery interest and general nature thereof, declaration of conflict of interest. Of course, council, you can do that now or anytime throughout the meeting that such a situation arises. I have no disclosures right now, so we'll continue. Item number five, adoption of the minutes. If I can get a mover and a seconder for our regular meeting, please. Peter, Belinda. Moved by Peter Kistemaker, second by Belinda Kistemaker. Be it resolved that the council, the corporation, the township of Hornpanne does hereby adopt the minutes of the regular meeting of council held on Wednesday, August 18th, 2021, as distributed. Any discussion on those minutes? Those in favor? And that is carried. None opposed. If I can get a mover and a seconder, please, for our special meeting minutes? Peter, Belinda. Moved by Peter Kistemaker, second by Belinda Kistemaker. Be it resolved that the council, the corporation, the township of Hornpanne does hereby adopt the minutes of the special meeting of council held on Tuesday, September 14th, 2021, as distributed. Any discussion on the minutes? Put it to a vote. Those in favor? I can, Belinda, you were frozen. Did you vote in favor? Okay, thank you. That is carried. None opposed. So item number six, seven, and eight, nine, we have nothing on our agenda. If we move to item number 10, managers' reports. If I can get a mover and a seconder before we discuss the reports, please. Drago and Belinda. Moved by Drago Stefanik, second by Belinda Kistemaker. Be it resolved that the council, the corporation, the township of Hornpanne does hereby acknowledge receipt of the managers' reports provided at the regular meeting of council held on Wednesday, September 22nd, 2021. And our first manager's report is the CAO report. Gail, would you like to speak to your report before I open up to comments or questions from council?
I do. Thank you. Yes, I just have a couple of things to add or to amend, I guess. First thing I want to do, though, is just express my thanks again for all the summer students this year. They did a fantastic job keeping the municipality looking nice and neat. And I just want to really commend them for their dedication and they're taking their job seriously and working safely in the whole bit. The other thing I wanted to comment on was I had mentioned in my report that the Economic Development Officer and I are going to be meeting with Hornpanne First Nation and Indigenous Services Canada on Friday. But that's now changed. Indigenous Services Canada would prefer we aren't at the meeting because we are going to be one of the proponents that are formally consulted. So instead, we're meeting afterwards in a private meeting with the chief and a couple of other, I believe, I don't know how the name is, but I think it's a solicitor for First Nations and one other chief that kind of abides over those types of establishment to Federal Reserve. So, excuse me, that's, and I understand it was the chief that had invited us and thought that it would be okay, but that's, it's probably better to keep separate if we're going to be consulted. So we're meeting 2:30 on Friday about that. And then the other thing I wanted to note is that you'll notice, imagine it's probably already up on Facebook now, but the survey for the municipal energy plan was released today. There's going to be a mail out going out as well to every mailbox. We're hoping the residents will participate and fill out the survey. It's also going to some stakeholders that have been identified through the process, such as businesses in town, hospitals, schools, things like that. And the survey is going to be open for a month, so it'll be open till October 20th. If we don't get as much response as we would like, we'll extend it another couple of weeks. And again, it's just going to feed into the plan for the whole community. So hopefully people will fill out the survey. We will also have paper copies here as well if people are not comfortable filling the survey out online. And I think that's all I wanted to add, so I'll just take questions or comments.
Okay, thank you, Gail. Just one question about the survey for the energy plan. How many responses are you looking for, for it to be, so you don't continue it? Because when I do a live update for the community, I can say that we're targeting so many responses.
Yeah, you know what? I didn't, I didn't talk to Ender about that. I can talk to him tomorrow about that. But I know when we did the housing survey, they were very impressed with our response. And it was more than what they would normally get. And do you remember what that, what that percentage was by any chance?
I don't. I do remember the higher.
I thought it was like 11% or something like that, which didn't sound high to me, but I guess it's high for those types of things. But anyway, let me, let me double check with him tomorrow. That's probably the best thing to do.
Shoot me an email and then I can ensure that I answered those last. Just before I open up the floor to questions, thank you for your report, Gail. I do have a couple of questions. Is, when is the final deadline for comments to either plan? I know that we're having our 29th meeting, but in your report, it says that they can still reach out. Is there an actual deadline for that?
Well, there's actually an open discussion at that 29th meeting. That's their statutory meeting and they're allowed to take comments. Well, they have to take comments and questions at that meeting. So technically, they can do it. I mean, it would be better if people did it ahead of time so that, you know, to prevent a whole lot of changes at the last minute, but they can certainly do it right up, right at that meeting.
Okay, so that's the deadline. Is that the meeting then? There won't be after the meeting till a few more weeks or anything like that? That's the deadline?
That's the deadline, yeah.
And just one other note, just trying to fill in my agenda here. The cyber training that is dated for around October 1st, is that for council as well or is that?
Yes, council and staff.
Council and staff, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll open up the floor that I've got clarity on my questions for council.
And sorry, can I just clarify that? That, that, that training is not a one-time training. It's, they send something out every week or every two weeks or something, exercises to do. So it's, it's kind of an ongoing session.
Okay, so we'll finish our portion as we can within that time period? Like it'll be a long, like a week of that we can finish our part? We won't have to meet like, say, an hour on Thursday or anything like that?
No, I think there may be, there may be one session at some point in time. I can't remember now. But, but generally, it's, they'll send something out to each person every week or every two weeks or whatever it is. And it's an exercise, a learning exercise. And also, I don't know if they're, I'm just guessing, but if they're going to try and send you fake emails or, you know, to see if you've learnt. I'm not really sure exactly how it's set up. Other than that, it's like an individual work session. But it's not, it's not like they'll send you 10 things at once and you can work on them as you wish. They'll send it, you know, at a specified time, probably a regular time period. And then I, I don't think there's a deadline to finish it, but it's, it's just going to be sort of ongoing like that.
Okay, great, great. That works great for my schedule. So thank you for that clarification, Gail. Okay, so I open up the floor to council. Questions or comments for Gail and her report? Counselor Stefanik, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Just my preamble, most councils now, I always refer to as a mayor. Now it has to be gender neutral, so I could only say mayor. So that's why if you are seeing me saying that, it's not disrespectful. It's respectful. I know the city Thunder Bay Council adopted that, as Timmott is looking at as well. So it'll be through you, mayor. So you understand where I'm coming from.
Thank you for that, Drago.
Thank you. Through you, mayor, to Gail, a very good report, very thorough. On deconstruction, potential construction of the motel, he said spring. Is there any more specific timeline sense of what month?
Well, it's going to have to be when the frost comes out of the ground. So it may be even June, just depends on what the weather's like. And, but he is anticipating having it done by the end of the year.
I see. Thank you. And question number two, in respect to the job advertisement for the arena postings. As of today, did anyone apply for the postings that were placed to the general public?
We have one applicant, so we've reposted again.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Stefanik. Any other comments or questions for Gail and her report? So just some further clarification on the postings, the job posting, Gail. So this is the second round?
Yes.
Okay, and is it for both the postings that are up? Because I saw there was two different.
Yeah, there were two. We got one applicant for the student posting and no applicants for the part-time, the regular part-time.
Okay, and those job postings are closing now when?
Oh, I'm not sure off the top of my head. I think in about a week, maybe.
Okay, don't worry about it. I'm just going to do a community update and I'll find them.
I can find out for you. I just don't have it on the top of my head.
No, it's fine, Gail, because I'll be on our website and I'll see them. But there is just the two, right?
Yes.
Okay, so if there's no further questions or comments for Gail, we'll move on. Okay. And we have our client service manager treasurer's report. Melissa, would you like to speak to your report before I open up the floor to questions or comment? Am I frozen? No, okay.
Melissa, I'm not sure if you can hear us, but we can't hear you if you're speaking.
Are you messaging with her, Gail? Okay, we'll just give her a second.
So she, I don't know why her, she's unlocked all her mics, but we still can't hear her, but she says she doesn't have any comments.
Okay.
And she can't hear us.
She can hear us? Okay, will you be able to? Can we call her on your phone or something so that she can talk through that, I guess?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, she's connected.
Okay, great. Back on that. I just have one question about the Infrastructure Ontario when we're looking at the debt that we're going to have to take. It's just under $1 million and we're doing a 10-year. I, the first question I had, was that the life of the asset is 10 years? And? That's not working.
She said yes, she consulted with Aqua and 10 years is the life, the cycle of the life, sorry.
Okay, and it's, so what does that do to our borrowing for the community? Because we're only allowed a percentage for repayments, for payments every year. Where does that put us if we're repaying at such a heavy amount? Is that upwards of $100,000 a year plus the interest? I'm just, I'm concerned that we might be strapping, strapping like future councils so that they, they do need access to funds, especially if there's no emergency, huge emergency reserves, so.
So she didn't have the exact amount, but she can quickly figure it out, but it's, it's well within the, well within the realm. And she said when we were considering the broadband project at $60,000 a year, that was, still left lots of room.
Okay, I guess, I'd like to know more the actual numbers, like the figures. Like I'm not sure what lots is compared, like it might be a different.
Yeah, she can, she can figure it out quickly, she said, so.
Okay, great. Okay, well, I'll open up the floor. Those are the only two questions I had regarding that. And thank you, Melissa, for your report. I open up the floor to council for questions or comments for our treasurer, client service manager. Counselor Stefanik, go ahead.
Yeah, through mayor, I, good report, Melissa. Well done, as well as before. I like the comments on the water agency where it's all positive. As far as financials, savings of $3,000, $10,000, $1,000, about $15,000 saving. I think that's commendable behalf of the administration team, also water agency. That's really positive. And item number three, I could not locate the report that the treasurer was referring to. I, I tried to go back into my records because she said, please see staff report, CST, 2011. I tried to go back. I could not retrieve it from my data. I'd like to have a hard copy, please. Within a week, I'm not suggesting tomorrow morning. Thank you. And that is all, mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm, I'm just thinking, is the item number three, staff report, is that not included in this agenda? I thought that's what I had read.
Yes, actually it is, yes.
Yeah, it's an item number, I'm sorry. Item 16.3, is that where the report's under? Just if you want to have a look, Drago, it should be there for you. And also too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Drago. If you were, we did get an update to our agenda. So if you sign out of your agenda notes and sign back in, you might see the update. It might be in there, Drago. I'm not sure.
I did update it, thank you. Oh, I did update it, thank you.
Do you see it then?
Yes, I do. Thank you for the information. I appreciate it.
Okay, great. Any other further questions from council for our client service manager, treasurer? Okay, not seeing any, and we'll just wait on that, those numbers. Just as a topic, Gail, we won't really have much choice for what we're doing in a way. We can't be getting debt beyond the life of the asset. So the only other way to reduce the cumulative debt would be to put more capital down at the beginning of the debt. That would be our only option, really, right? Okay. So we'll continue on to report number three. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Gail.
Sorry, Melissa just was reminding me that we already budgeted for this during the budget discussions for this year.
Right, right. Yeah, we did budget it, but I don't, I, did we disclose that it would be a 10-year? Like when we budgeted, did we budget for the amount of the payments? Are we staying within those payments? What exactly did we budget for? We're making faces at each other now. I can.
Oh, I don't know what was going on with my computer. Yeah, it was more, more just the, the idea that we were going to cover it with debt, she said. So wasn't a specific dollar amount per year at that time. I didn't know the terms.
Okay, okay. So to proceed with that, then, because we didn't have the full term moving forward, um, I guess in further capital discussions like that, that should be part of our discussion is what, what we can actually afford to take on for debt in payment? Like we can, obviously, we can take the million-dollar debt over that course of time, but then it, it straps us in other areas. So just when we're balancing that out to ensure that we've done all those considerations of, like an allowable limit, I guess, is what I'm talking about?
Yeah, we could certainly include the percentages or whatever in the discussion, you know?
Yeah, it's just moving ahead so that we're not coming back and then it's, you know, the staff is equipped to be able to know exactly where their parameters are. Okay. Okay, so moving on, we'll go to report number three is the Economic Development Officer's report. And I don't have any questions on that one or clarification. Is there any questions or comments for the Economic Development Officer? Stacy, would you like to speak to your report before I open it up for comments or questions?
I just have one update. So you'll see under the COVID infrastructure resilient stream grant. I put in there that we're working with the installers to figure out an installation date for the toddler park. So we've got confirmation that they're going to be here on the 28th. So you'll probably see some action with our Public Works Department doing the excavation of the site over the next few days.
Okay, great. And we weren't supposed to do anything with that now till next year, right?
Correct.
Okay, so we'll get a bit done. Hopefully it'll go well for everyone.
Hopefully, yes.
I open up the floor for comments or questions for Stacy, our Economic Development Officer for council. I'll go ahead, Counselor Stefanik.
Yeah, through you, mayor. Solid report, Stacy. I'm just looking at the Arena Community Center Rehab Program. Is everything online as timelines that you have established previously? Is it all adhered to? Are you ahead of the scheduling for the rehab program? Are you behind or status quo?
We are status quo. We did a change request, of course, because the application went in 2019, so we're status quo with that so far.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments or questions for Stacy? Okay, thank you, Stacy. And we're moving on to our Public Works Manager's report. And although Dwayne can't be with us this evening, I do want to get some clarification. First of all, just to give a shout out to Dwayne about this incredible equipment that he has and this pilot. I was kind of interested on how he got involved with this. I, it sounds pretty amazing. Do you know, Gail, or?
I think, I think it was just something that came through as a promotion, you know, in an email, as far as I know. And he just took a look at it and thought he'd give it a try to see what kind of information it spits out. And it's pretty detailed, actually. What it, yeah.
Okay. And the only other question that I had was that the Public Works employees had received road grader training course. And I was just wondering how that all went and.
It went, it went well. There's, we have one, we're short one staff member at the moment who unexpectedly, who was unable to participate, but it went well with, with all the others.
Okay, great. Good, good. So I open up the floor to other, other comments or questions that Gail can forward to the Public Works Manager, or maybe she can answer. Counselor Stefanik, go ahead.
Yeah, through me, thank you. I was going to make the same comment as you, but I won't repeat what you said about the pilot program. I think that'd be such a great bonus for us where the Public Works Manager will see exactly the potholes, the difficulties, the challenges, and not to go back and forth. He looks at his data. I think it's a wonderful program and I'm glad he's on it at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Stefanik. If there's no other further comments or questions, okay. So I'll put the motion to a vote that we acknowledge receipt of the managers' reports. Those in favor? And that is carried. Okay, move, oh, go ahead, Gail.
Okay, so I have those numbers Melissa's provided. So our debt repayment limit is $865,459 per year, or for this year at least. And we have annual payments of $104,000, so there's $761,000 remaining. So that's about, we've used up about 12%.
Okay, and then I guess the other figure that we'd look at is what does a healthy, like in personal debt, there's a healthy carrying amount of good debt. And what would that be for a municipality? Like we don't want to max out our, just under $1,000 in payments. So is there a number out there that can guide us?
I'll have to take advice from Melissa, so I'm not sure about that.
Okay, it's not a thing that needs to be discussed today. It's just when we are doing our discussions, just so that we don't end up in a place where, say, if the number is, say, 40% that you want to stay around, we wouldn't, we would want to ensure that we're looking ahead to the future if there's going to be debt we'll be incurring, say, in three or four or five years, right?
For sure.
Okay. Okay, so moving on to, we're on 11 correspondence action items. So if I can get a mover and a seconder for 11.1, please? So if I can get a mover in a second or for 11.1, please. Peter? If I can get a second or Belinda, thank you. Moved by Peter Kissamaker, second by Belinda Kissamaker. Where is the Township has received correspondence from Contact North, requesting support for establishment of a regional simulator-based training center in conjunction with White River Forest Products and Confederation College. And whereas the training center will support the education and safety of new young workers seeking to become heavy equipment operators within local and surrounding communities in the north. Therefore, be it resolved that the council, the corporation, the township of Hornpane does hereby provide in principle support for Contact North's Regional Training Center initiative, and agrees to discuss the possibility of providing a future financial contribution during the 2022 budget discussions. Be it further resolved that a letter of response outlining the above will, will be sent to the address identified in the request. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, I don't see any, so I'll put it to a vote, those that are in favor. And that is carried, none opposed. I definitely would like to see this take off. Okay, 11.2, Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing Modernization Intake III. If I can get a mover in a second or please. Drago? Peter? I apologize, council, sometimes my computer is delayed down here. Moved by Drago Stefanic, second by Peter Kissamaker. Be it resolved that the council, the corporation, the township of Hornpane does hereby authorize the CAO clerk to submit an expression of interest, EOI, to the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing under the Municipal Modernization Intake III Implementation Stream up to a maximum of. Deadline to submit an expression of interest is October 19th, 2021. And I open up the floor for discussion. Gail, in the resolution, when I was reading the package, I wasn't exactly sure why it was blank. Was there a recommendation from staff of what?
Yeah, we, we didn't have a chance to meet about that until today because various people were on vacation. So what we thought would be the best thing to do and actually would not cost us any money is go with the, instead of the implementation stream, the review stream, which is 100% funded, and try to get three studies done. One would be Water and Wastewater, or not Management, Master Plan, which is in our SDR. One would be Independent User Fee Study, which is also in our SDR. And user fee study, I'm not sure if I said fee. And then a facility assessment review on the arena, which would help to inform our building addition and renovations for that project. And all of these types of projects were, were approved for other communities in the intake too. So that's what we are thinking to focus on. They're all sort of larger. There, there are a couple of littler things that we could do for implementation, but really, we, we covered most of all our major things that we want to do for implementation and intake too, and we're approved for that. Um, so this is what we came up with today after, after meeting and discussing and researching some of the other projects. So we would actually change that to review stream, and it would be no cost.
Okay, to the review stream? So instead of implementation, it would be review stream? Okay.
Yeah, it would be stream, and then it would be, which is 100% funded.
Okay, and what, what would be the amount that we would be applying for? The maximum, or?
The max is, yeah, the max is 150, 150,000. So now, of course, if we come, you know, by the time we, we go to apply for that, if, if that's only going to cover two studies, we'll have to only apply for two studies. But this program or this stream requires individual resolutions for, in support of whatever it is that you're going to be doing. So at the October 13th meeting, we'll, we'll have the applications pretty much done by then. So we'll, we'll come back with a specific resolution for the Water, Wastewater Management Plan, et cetera.
Okay.
We'll have a better idea of costs at that time.
Yeah, I really like the idea, especially the user fee, just because now we have the money to upgrade the arena. And will it encompass, like, into the future of that? Like, could the user fees study look at that?
We can ask for it too, yeah. Honestly, we haven't really discussed it much, other than that it's something that we need to, to do, and we've, we've, you know, we've kind of started it a little bit, but it, it would be probably more objective, frankly, if somebody independent did it. And, and we're just finding it hard to find the time to switch from this, this, you know, to, to get, to get it all done. So instead of let's, we've been doing it in pieces, bits and pieces, if we can get somebody to just do it, that would be great. And, you know, obviously, we, we will be involved and, and we'll take some of our time, but I think in the end, I think it would actually be a better product.
Yes, and then we have, yeah, I think, well, just from the three that you listed, we have many documents that support this right from the very beginning. I think we would be an ideal candidate for this.
Yeah, yeah. We're actually hoping to contact, well, we're not hoping to, we're going to contact the successful communities and see if they'll share their applications, you know, with us so that we can doctor it up a little bit and personalize it and hopefully be as successful.
Good idea, good idea. Any other comments on the resolution? So, Gail, then with your suggestions, we would change the resolution to, sorry, implementation would change to review stream?
Review, yeah, review stream.
And then the amount would be 150,000? Um, to, up to the maximum of 150,000?
Up to the maximum, 150,000. But you could, you could, if you wanted to add to that, the program is 100% funded, just to be clear that we're not authorizing the spending of 150,000.
Okay, so I have, be it resolved that the council, the corporation, the township of Hornpane does hereby authorize the CAO clerk to submit an expression of interest, EOI, to the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing under the Municipal Modernization Program Intake III Review Stream up to a maximum 150,000, which is fully funded by the ministry.
Correct, that's great.
And for council's benefit, the remainder of this motion reads, deadline to submit an expression of interest is October 19th, 2021. And I open it for further discussion or continued discussion. Okay, seeing none, I put this to a vote, those in favor. And that is carried, none opposed. I don't have any tags, Gail, so to tag this resolution for you?
Oh, okay.
You'll find it, and then up for me to re-sign and write it for you.
Okay. I've noted it down as well, so.
Okay, great. Okay, so moving on to 11.3, council. If I can get a mover in a second or please. Belinda and Peter? A move by Belinda Kissamaker, second by Peter Kissamaker. Where is the Truth and Reconciliation Commission, TRC, releasing the final report on June 2nd, 2015, which includes 94 calls to action to address the legacy of residential schools and advance the process of Canadian reconciliation? And whereas the recent discoveries of remains and unmarked graves across Canada have led to increased calls for all levels of government to address the recommendations in the TRC's calls to action. And whereas all Canadians and all orders of government have a role to play in reconciliation. And whereas Recommendation Number 80 of the Truth and Reconciliation Commission called upon the federal government in collaboration with the Aboriginal peoples to establish as a statutory holiday, a national day of truth and reconciliation to ensure the public commemoration of the history and legacy of residential schools remains a vital component of the reconciliation process. And whereas the federal government has announced September 30th, 2021, as the first national day for truth and reconciliation, National Orange Shirt Day, as a statutory, statutory holiday. Therefore, be it resolved that the council, the corporation, the township of Hornpane does hereby commit to recognizing September 30th, 2021, as the national day for truth and reconciliation, National Orange Shirt Day, by sharing the stories of residential school survivors, their families and communities. Any discussion on the motion? And I just have one question. Our office will be closed that day, Gail?
Yes, it will. The QP Union Agreement lists all of the stat holidays that are, can't think of the word I'm looking for. But our staff get, and there's an additional sentence that says any other municipal, provincial, or federal holidays that are created will be followed as well.
Okay, good, good. And we've given notice to the public about that?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, if there's any other comments on the motion? Seeing none, I put it to a vote, those in favor. And that is carried, none opposed. Moving on to 11.4. If I can get a mover in a second or please. Drago? Peter? Moved by Drago Stefanic, second by Peter Kissamaker. Be it resolved that the council, the corporation, the township of Hornpane does hereby authorize the CAO clerk to submit an application for funding to the Rural Economic Development RED program under the Economic Diversification and Competitiveness Stream in order to, for work to begin on the rural revitalization project per attached preliminary project plan as prepared by Rural Development Network. Be it further resolved that council authorizes a municipal contribution of up to 75,000 to this grant, which stream provides up to 50% in cost-shared funding for projects that address barriers and better position rural communities to attract and retain, retain jobs and investment. Build community capacity and support for economic development in Ontario's rural communities and help diversify and grow local economies. Application deadline is Friday, October 1st, 2021. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll put that to the vote, those in favor. I only saw one. Peter's good, Drago, okay, there we go, that is carried, sorry. 11.5, if I can get a mover in a second or please. Belinda? Peter? Moved by Belinda Kissamaker, second by Peter Kissamaker. Where is council has received correspondence, a request from Branch 194, the Royal Canadian Legion, to complete and return the municipal information for liquor sales licenses form regarding Branch 194's application for a liquor license, for liquor licenses, sorry. Therefore, be it resolved that the council, the corporation, the township of Hornpane acknowledges the receipt and confirmation of the information provided. Be it further resolved that the attached form 2085E Municipal Information for Liquor Sales Licenses will be provided in support of the application as requested and required. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I put it to a vote, those in favor. And that is carried, none opposed. 11.6, if I can get a mover in a second or please. Drago? Peter? Moved by Drago Stefanic, second by Peter Kissamaker. Where is the corporation, the township of Hornpane is committed to developing a community-supported broadband network that offers all residents and businesses a state-of-the-art fiber-to-the, fiber-to-the-prem connection. And whereas the availability of adequate and affordable broadband for all citizens and stakeholders is important to the future of the community. And whereas all Canadian residential and business fixed broadband internet access service subscribers should be able to access speeds of at least 50 megabytes per second download and 10 megabytes per second upload, and to subscribe to a service offering an unlimited data allowance. And whereas council has an opportunity to partner with Community Network Partners Incorporated, CNP, to qualify and apply for additional funding opportunities, including securing funding from the Ministry of Infrastructure's Improving Connectivity in Ontario Icon Program, in order to facilitate increased economic growth resilience and improved access to health and education services. Therefore, be it resolved that the council, the corporation, the township of Hornpane does hereby agree to partner with Community Network Partners Incorporated as described above, and to commit a limited amount of human resources to work in collaboration with the Community Network Partners in order to maximize the project's business metrics. Be it further resolved that both parties agree to further assess and negotiate the terms and conditions of the projects, of the project once more research is completed and data gathered and analyzed. Discussion on the motion? My understanding, I had a discussion just with Gail in our agenda meeting, my understanding of this resolution, because I wasn't here at the special meeting and did not have the opportunity to watch the presentation as of yet, was that this isn't a binding, this would not be a binding resolution, but if we were to move forward, there would be joint, possibly joint funding applications that would need to be filled out. Is that my understanding? Am I saying that right, Gail? I probably am not.
Well, the funding application, this would not be binding, you're right about that, but the funding application would be for Hornpane only, because the, the CNP is dealing with each community on its own, like one-on-one. So we would be working on the applications together, but the, it's actually not, it would be just for our community, the funding, it would not be joint with another community, if that's what you meant, I'm not sure.
Okay, yeah, so it would just be for our community, okay. And if we were to further assess and negotiate the terms, at that time, we could back out of it?
Uh, you could, if the terms didn't suit you, but I, I think what they had suggested was that over the, over the winter time, we could apply to NOHFC for funding under their program, and we could apply to a new program called Ontario Connects. And my, my concern with that is if we got, if we were successful in the funding, because we would know that by springtime, when they want to start their construction, was if the terms then weren't suitable to the township, do we want to turn away to, well, there would be the ICON funding for 300,000, NOHFC of a possible 500,000. And in Ontario Connects, I'm not sure what their cap is, but if, if it didn't suit, or if council wasn't comfortable, did we want, do we want to turn away the funding if we were to be successful?
Okay. Um, I do have a question. So if we were to, so we know the amounts, if we were to sit down, we would know the amounts that we would need to apply for. We would need to be successful in getting those amounts. Then we would have a portion that we would still cover, correct?
Yeah.
Are they offering, are they still offering that as a loan portion where we pay them by the month? are they still offering that as a loan portion where we pay them by the month?
They... they're offering it as an open loan, so they could loan you the difference, loan us the difference, and then if we wanted to find or could find an entity with a lower interest rate, we could essentially borrow the amount that they've loaned us at a lower rate, pay it back and not have as much interest to pay. So you could actually pay it off on a schedule, or you could pay it off sort of, you know, next week or something.
Okay.
They did stress that they were quite flexible, or they want to be flexible, and that they... one of the things they said in their presentation, and they also said when we met with them, was that it's more of a passion project, it's not... they're not looking to make huge money on this, and they're not having a lot of sort of... they didn't use the term return on investment, but there's not a big profit margin for them, is what they said, it's more they want to work with the communities to find solutions.
Okay. Go ahead, councillor Stefanik, or Stefanik, sorry. Kistemaker, Peter?
Okay, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, I can hear you.
My concern is even if we're successful in the funding, there is an exceptional amount of money that Hornpane has to commit to retain over the course of 20 years. And as everybody knows, technology changes as a very sharp running curve and it screws all the time, and talk about assets, one out of... outliving its life expectancy before we actually pay it off, and I think this would be a good example of that. We were to go ahead and accept this challenge, we're asking more of our town staff, they gotta do a lot more paperwork, and with the upcoming arena project that we have to pay a portion of, as well as the arena, pardon me, the airport and the arena, I think we're biting off too much, a little bit too much right now, and like I said, I fear that technology changing every day, it's... you stand to have a big investment in something that may not even be of any use within 10 years. We're looking at 20-year payback, and we have a... we have a lot of other things to do first, that should be a little further down on our priorities.
Okay, thank you for that, councillor Kistemaker. So my understanding then, as at the presentation, there wasn't any further... was there any room to renegotiate those... the 20-year term or the amount that was still standing as it had in the past? Yes, go ahead, Peter.
Would renegotiate, I understand, Gail, but make it a shorter term, but by putting more money down or increasing the payments. So instead of $5,000 a month, we'd be paying $10,000 a month. Then there was even talk of the upcoming hotel being built, and possibly an influx of money coming in through taxes and water subsidizing this project, and I would rather see anything but that. If there was any influx of money coming in that would help pay for this project, I would rather see the money go towards reducing our water bill and reducing our taxes.
Okay, okay. Thank you for that. Go ahead, Gail.
Yeah, just to add to the term, they did say that they... really the only way of reducing the amount without... sorry, reducing the term without increasing the amount is to secure extra funding. So if... it all hinges on what the funding applica... or, you know, the success of the funding applications. So on the one hand, they were saying that they were flexible and the five amount was a placeholder, but on the other hand, they're saying the only way it could go down is if we had secured more outside funding.
Okay, okay. Councillor Kistemaker, Belinda?
I just felt... my feeling on the whole thing is there's still a lot of work to be done, and I still felt... I still feel like there's a lot of work that we as a community have to do in order to go forward with anything like this, and we're... I feel we're not ready. I... with everything I'm reading right now, there may be more that's coming forward from higher up, because they do want everyone connected, I just think maybe something else would come out of this, but I really don't feel like we are ready to look at this yet. We... I think there's other things we have to do.
Okay, to get ourselves shovel-ready, you're talking about?
Yes, to get us in a better position, especially when it comes to our taxpayers.
Right. Was there any discussion at the meeting about having just the fiber to the businesses? Like running a fiber network down our front street and along portions of Third and Fourth Avenue, or Fifth Avenue? Was there any discussion on that?
It... some of that did come up during the discussion, it's... it just... I still didn't feel like we were... they weren't ready and we weren't ready. There's something missing, there's a gap missing within their presentation. I still think there's more that has to be looked at, that's my personal opinion.
Okay, okay. Councillor Stefanik, go ahead.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I've listened to both councillors, and obviously it makes a lot of sense to me from all the angles, the cost to municipality taxpayers. By having the first phase, as I referred to it, there's no commitment on behalf of the municipality, right, and the council, and won't be extensive work, I assume, for administration team. I would like to see if possible to continue at such time that administration comes back recommendation, we should continue or not continue, and with all those reasons we all discussed here this evening, brought by both councillors, Kistemakers. Thank you.
Okay. I opened that up to Gail about... so Drago suggesting that we do pass this motion, I would... is your suggestion along that lines as well, to vote this motion and then have staff continue discussions?
So I had provided a report for the closed session at the last meeting, I'm not sure if you had an... I know you weren't there, and I don't know if you had an opportunity to see that, but it kind of lays everything out there, and then, of course, we have to... we have... if we're going to move forward with any investigation, we have to let them know, our deadline is September 24th, so... for me, just listening to these comments from both councillor Kistemakers, I don't know, it... I... I do tend to agree that I feel like we're not ready, but I mean, we are at your will, so if you want us to do it, we can do it, I just think that, again, if we do apply for the funding and we are successful in it, and then we decide not to go with it, I think that just may cause issues in the future, and I think councillor Belinda Kistemaker had a good point about the government maybe instituting something anyways, it's hard to tell, it's kind of very vague. They make these announcements, but they don't actually give you specifics on where they're going to do the work or anything like that, so I mean, is this going to happen for us in any case, without us having to take on all this debt? I don't know. So I really don't have a definitive answer, other than just to hearing the concerns that were raised, and my own concern about possibly not using the funding, but again, we will do, you know, whatever council wishes, of course. I don't know if that helps, but that's kind of where I'm at.
Okay, thank you for that, Gail. This would be my suggestion, council, and I do apologize, I did need vacation, so I was not there at the meeting, but I'm wondering if we put the motion to a vote, stay in the game for the next... till our October 13th meeting, and we have a second meeting in October as well, do we not, Gail?
We've set two meetings a month, yes.
And then if we can somehow make contact with the ministries, and I have no problem being involved with that, and seeing if we can get some further direction, because I would hate for us to shut doors that possibly will be the avenues that the ministry will use to bring fiber to the home. That's my only concern, is that if they're the players in the market. Go ahead, Gail.
So I just, if you don't mind, I just... I had asked Stacy to follow up on... to see if she could get more information on that, and I don't know if she got a response. So if I could just ask Stacy if she did get a response on any details of that funding?
Yes, for sure.
So I didn't have a... definitely didn't have a chance, but just to remind you that Melanie said that all those programs are provincial, so they would have to be... we'd have to check to see if we could stack them anyway, because they possibly could be on the same matrix.
So Melanie was saying that at the meeting, we possibly may or may not be able to stack funding?
Yes, they're all provincial, so we'd have to check to see if we could stack those three different funding programs, that would be... each ministry would have to okay that, because they're all provincial funding, and we would have to check to see if the matrix that the ICON, they gave us a certain amount of money per household, so if the other two funding programs are on the same thing, they probably not give us the same funding for each household.
What is the likelihood of us getting meetings in place with the different ministries at play over the next three weeks?
I don't know if we would get meetings per se, but I'm sure we could send emails, if nothing else, I mean, we might get a meeting, but they may respond to emails.
Okay. I'm... what I'm thinking, this is where my mind is going, council, is that we show that we've done due diligence to try and get answers, so that if, in fact, that they... we end up not going with Community Network Partners, we can say, well, we had... we don't have the staff, we don't have the resources, and we did what we could with our limited resources, staff of staff and money and time, and we had to pull out of this agreement, that we couldn't move forward with it, because we didn't... we weren't prepared, like Belinda's saying, and we weren't ready, and we didn't feel like they were ready, and we didn't know what was coming down from the province. And I think sending a few emails, passing this resolution, and then making a definitive answer at our last October meeting, and getting ourselves either out or in, depending on what comes from the conversations, does that seem like a plan of attack? Councillor Stefanik, go ahead.
Madam Mayor, I like Belinda's comment that something didn't fit, and she was there observing and viewing. I think one more meeting, and there's no further qualification, I would certainly not go further. If there's no more... the questions, Belinda made comments to, alluded to, if they're not given the next meeting, well then, we would certainly say, you know what, thank you, but no thank you. As councillor Peter said, there may be something coming down the pipe from the ministry provincial where it'll be 100% funded, it's going to be mandated across the province, so I would still have one more meeting, and no further advancements are made, I will pull out at that time.
So if we were to pass this... thank you, councillor Stefanik. So for it to pass this resolution, we can totally get out of... there's nothing committed, right, Gail? Just to clarify that?
Yeah, excuse me, yes, it's non-binding.
Non-binding, we can have a meeting with Melanie and the partners, send out our emails, and then wait for response, and make a final decision at our October... our last October meeting?
Well, there... I think there... I mean, we can, of course. I think their deadline of the 24th was to provide information to ICON that so many communities were still interested or whatnot. So I suppose, I mean, if we... I don't think they'll be expecting that, but you can certainly, I would say they... I mean, there's nothing stopping you from pulling out at that time if you... if you want to, but I don't think that's what they would be expecting. But yes, it's non-binding.
I'm just... the concern I have, and is I would like to watch the meeting, I just got back today, I was going to try and watch it this afternoon, and I did not get time to. And I just want to ensure that we have all our... that we've exhausted every avenue that we can show that we did that, and if it means sending emails, that we do it that way. That's my concern, and I am disappointed that we didn't have more numbers, more data. So councillor Stefanik, go ahead.
Yeah, just a final comment, I think in the emails with a respectful suggest, found the information we request, if the information that we are requesting as council, we cannot further proceed. So upfront, there's no hidden agenda as behalf of our council, if we don't have the data, we can't proceed.
Okay, so I put the motion to a vote, if there's no further discussion? Okay, those in favor of carrying the motion? Okay, those in favor of defeating the motion? Okay, and that motion is defeated. Okay, we'll move on, council, to 12 correspondence only, or sorry, correspondence information only? If I can get a mover and a seconder, please? Drago? Moved by Drago Stefanik, second by Belinda Kistemaker. Be it resolved that the council, the corporation, the township of Hornpane does hereby acknowledge receipt of the correspondence information-only package attached to the agenda of the regular meeting of council held on Wednesday, September 22nd, 2021. Any comments or concerns in the information-only package that you'd like to talk about? I do have a couple. I was wondering about 12.4, Gail, I know Dwayne's not here tonight to talk about the landfill remaining capacity, but I went through the report, and I'm not exactly sure, is it what we thought, or was it less? Because it was showing more cells than... I didn't quite understand at all.
Yeah, I'm going to say it's about what we were expecting, because when we first started talking about this a few years ago, that we were told five or six years left remaining, and now they're saying three, so I think that's pretty much on par with what we were originally told.
Okay.
Now, the only thing I would say to caution is if we're doing demolitions, that's going to fill things up more quickly than everyday use.
And then so for... oh, go ahead, councillor Kistemaker, Belinda?
On that topic, I was kind of wondering when I was reading it, um, has some... I was kind of curious if you guys had talked about how the housekeeping could be changed at that site, on how they take care of things, that those things come up, recommendations on how to make it last a little better, or use up maybe those cells that were partially full, or, you know, that kind of thing, was that ever discussed, or?
Yeah, we have discussed that, and I think some of those things that we can't change now can be put into practice in the future.
Yeah.
But definitely now that they've sort of delineated what's been used and what hasn't, the parts that haven't been can be, sort of thing, that we weren't sure of before. So I think that's all part of the process, is to get better practices moving forward. So yes, it has been discussed, and it will... it will continue to be discussed as we move forward. Okay, thank you.
Great, great question, Belinda, thank you. Okay, so... Okay, so, um, with that in mind that we possibly have three years at the max level, do we have a plan, where are we moving with our landfill plan then of how we're going to get a new landfill in that? Will that be coming to council or?
Well, yeah, it will be. They're, they're actually thinking right now that, uh, hopefully that we can expand, which would take a lot less time and money actually than creating a new site. So they're still sort of doing some engineering and, and the logistics of that. And, you know, with the check with the MOE to see if that's possible because there are hydro lines there and there's water, I think, to the east. Um, so there are some concerns that they have to take care of, but that's kind of what they're hoping and, and actually what, what we're hoping as well because of those two reasons, less, less expense and less time. I thought that will come back for sure.
Okay, so when can we expect that at council? I'm just trying to get a timeline in my mind.
You know what, I, without looking back at the, at the, um, schedule, I, I don't, I can't tell you off the top of my head, but I could find out and, and, uh, send you an email, send you all an email.
Okay, thank you for that, Gail, I'd appreciate it. Counselor Stefanic, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, through you, uh, item number 12.20 ESA report. I assume all the recommendations were completed through the Public Works and Recreation Department?
Well, it was just done last week, so, uh, they are working on doing them. And there's a couple, a few things that have to be done by an electrician, so that's already, actually, they were meeting with him today. Uh, and the other things that the staff is going to.
Yeah, they were very minor, obviously, yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, and the other, uh, uh, comment I had was on, just to further our internet discussion on 12.2, I'm hoping we get full funding for something because it doesn't seem like it's a real feasibility project to bring fibre to the home in our community. So it was disappointing reading that. Under, uh, 12.6, the consolidated linear infrastructure? This is new, Gail?
Yeah, there, uh, you're gonna, you're gonna now need a, an ECA to do stormwater and, uh, I forget exactly if it's combined stormwater and water, um, sorry, it's not water, sewer. Um, but Aqua is going to be coming to our October 13th meeting to, to give a presentation on this and to answer any questions because it's, it's, I, we have questions as well. As well as they will help us do the application for the ECA. Um, so that's good there. And, um, just on another note, while they're at that meeting, that's when they're also going to come and talk about the fist, fixed price versus cost plus options for, um, contract, operating contract. So I, I don't have a lot more information about that particular, uh, CLI stuff at the moment. But we can expect to be, um, informed on 13th.
Okay, great, great. That was all the questions I had. I, I will take note though that, um, Patrick Catur at Aqua is the management change. Patrick used to work in our community and I think that's a good fit. So if there's no other comments, questions or highlights to the information only, I'll put the motion to a vote. Those in favor to accept the information only package? Belinda, are you frozen? I saw Peter and Drago say yes, Belinda, yes, okay. That's carried. Okay, so we're moving on at 7:15 right now, so we'll continue on to item number 14 is conferences, seminars and training. This actually came up at another meeting and we asked to have it on this agenda. Counselor Stefanic, you were not here at that meeting and I had wanted to ensure that you had opportunity if you wanted to put your name forward. So if I can get a mover and a second or first, please, and we can discuss the motion? Drago? If I can get a second or please? Belinda? Moved by Drago Stefanic, second by Belinda Kissamaker. Be it resolved that the council, the corporation, the township of Hornpain does hereby approve the expenditures to be included by the fall, incurred by the following to attend the 2021 Ontario Tourism Summit scheduled for October 26th and 27th, 2021 in Ottawa, Ontario. So I open the floor to, uh, discussion on the motion. Gail, was there any staff that, uh, wanted to attend?
Uh, yes, Stacy, Stacy would like to attend in person.
Okay. Uh, Counselor Stefanic, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Thank you for thinking of me, I really appreciate that. But due to my work commitment, I have been able to attend. Thank you very much and I was looking forward to, but I'm unable, thank you.
Yes, thank you for that, Drago. Yeah, I think it is important just because we are going to be establishing the geographical centre of Ontario that we will be needing to make commitments and connections and networks throughout the tourism industry to mark us on the map, so. I think, thanks Stacy for putting her name forward. Is there any counselors that would like to go? Was this, uh, discussed with John at all?
I think he was at the last, at the meeting where it was discussed.
Okay, I know it was really short because we moved it, so.
Yeah, I don't, he didn't say anything to me about wanting to, to go.
Okay. Is the, I didn't really look at the cost structure. Is there quite a significant savings if you go virtually? Cause I would not be able to go in person, but I may be able to do virtual.
So it looks like, uh, virtual up to five people is $250 for the, uh, registration. And event, uh, sorry, uh, advanced payment for in-person is $4.75, so it's about half.
About half, okay. Well, that might be a good fit. I don't mind attending virtually and then if Stacy's in person, any connections I make, we could, um, text back and forth and maybe we can do a, see how that works. We could try a new, new hybrid model of attending conference. Okay, I will definitely put my name down then for virtual though. Okay, going once, going twice, council? And I know I had checked the room on my, uh, budget back at the beginning or in July. I believe I have quite a bit of room still left before we pass this motion.
You want Melissa to check?
Yeah, I think, I'm pretty sure I still have quite a bit of room.
Yeah, I, I don't know off the top of my head, but.
Okay, okay. Moved by Drago Stefanic, second by Belinda Kissamaker. Be it resolved that the council, the corporation, the township of Hornpain does hereby approve the expenditures to be incurred by the following to attend the 2021 Ontario Tourism Summit scheduled for October 26th and 27th, 2021 in Ottawa, Ontario. One, Stacy Rendell in person. Two, Cheryl Fort virtually. And I put that to a vote, those in favor? And that is carried and unopposed. Okay, moving on to 14.2, Federation of Canadian Municipalities Sustainable Communities Conference 2021. If I can get a mover and a second or please? Peter? Belinda? Moved by Peter Kissamaker, second by Belinda Kissamaker. Be it resolved that the council, the corporation, the township of Hornpain does hereby approve the expenditures to be incurred by the following to attend the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, FCM, 2021 Sustainable Communities Conference scheduled virtually for October 19th to the 21st. Is anyone able to attend that conference? And that's a Wednesday or a Tuesday to a Thursday? Is there anyone from staff, sorry, Gail, that would like to attend that?
I actually, uh, forgot to ask Stacy if she would be interested or available. If I don't, if you, I can ask her now. Sorry to put you on the spot, Stacy.
Uh, I am available. Uh, I think that one was, uh, really, really good over the last two years and I think it'll really help with our arena grant.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, so Stacy is able? I am not able, council, I have other meetings scheduled for those days. Okay, I've inserted Stacy Rendell's name in there and, um, was John, did John, um, give any indication? Either way?
He didn't, no.
Do we want to, um, approve, uh, councillor? Just put to a councillor if John would like to attend, so that that can be done?
You could, it's, it's only $250.
Go ahead, Belinda, go ahead.
I'll try and do it.
Okay. Okay, and then we'll leave that open, Gail, for John and he can do that out of his budget if he would like to, correct?
Yep.
Okay, so I've inserted, uh, number one, Stacy Rendell, number two, Belinda Kissamaker, number three is empty, and those in favor? And that is carried. Okay, moving on to 15 committee reports, there's none 16 news and other business. I give it over to Gail for 16.1 COVID-19 and community control update.
Okay, thank you. Um, so for community control group, we're still meeting bi-weekly. Um, there hasn't been too, too much to, um, thankfully to, uh, talk about other than just the general, uh, nature of what's been going on with COVID-19. The, um, Porcupine Health Unit District is, is doing actually quite well so far, so hopefully it stays that way. We currently have six active cases. Uh, Thunder Bay District has two and Algoa has 15, which is high, high for them, I think, or comparatively for the rest of the, uh, most of the rest of the pandemic. Um, so for this week's meeting, we have a meeting tomorrow, so I'm going to be seeing if they have any guidelines yet for Halloween or if they're planning on putting any in. And also we're still waiting for, um, some information on how they're going to be, uh, telling us to handle dressing rooms for, uh, hockey. Um, so I think you saw in Dwayne's report that NOHA is, um, actually has stricter, um, guidelines than the province does for, uh, youth sport. So, um, I'm not sure how that will affect youth, youth sport enrollment, but, um, it's, it's likely this, the safer option in any case. Um, with regard to, um, other, uh, entry into the arena during the season, anything that's not an organized sport and doesn't have other regulations that they have to follow, um, well, everybody will have to be, uh, double vaccinated and show proof of that and also do the masking. Um, so such things as, uh, say, um, if there were to be figure skating, uh, that's an organized sport and the youth between 12 and 18 would not have to be vaccinated unless the figure skating's, um, association would put extra, requirements on that. Um, spectators will have to be double vaccinated even if they are between 12 and 18. Uh, if they're playing the youth sport and organized and actively playing, that's different. Um, except minor hockey. Um, but if they're going in, if you're going in and bringing one child to an organized sport and the other child is over 12 and is going to, to watch with you, they have to be vaccinated as well. So we're going to have to come up with a system, um, of having that checked out at the arena for public skating, things like that. So we'll be working on that in the next couple of weeks. Um, today, uh, September 22nd was of course the first day that some of these, um, organize, not organizations, but, uh, fitness facilities, restaurants, uh, sporting events and things like that, um, that you had to have your proof. So as far as I know, that's been going okay for us here. I do have a meeting, uh, with the health unit, uh, a group meeting with the health unit on Friday. They are looking for, I guess, feedback on if we've, what kind of complaints we're getting, if we're getting complaints. And they want to discuss enforcement, um, methods and options for, um, you know, in case they need to go that far. Um, what else? Oh, just that, uh, Ontario hasn't been doing too, too badly in comparison to some of the other provinces. Uh, we were up to over 800 cases a day a couple of weeks ago and we are, um, down below 500 a day, which is still not great, but it's a lot better than what it has been. Um, Alberta's doing, uh, terribly. Saskatchewan is also struggling. I know for Alberta, they're looking to send their ICU patients to other provinces. Uh, Saskatchewan, they're using pediatric ICU, uh, for adults. So it's, um, you know, it's kind of scary. It's sad to see this is all preventable at this point in time. So hopefully, um, people will reconsider for the good of, of everybody. And if they're able, they'll consider getting vaccinated. Uh, and then just the other thing is the Ontario, um, Human Rights Commission has come out with a a statement, her position, saying, um, that mandatory, uh, uh, vaccination and requiring proof of vaccination to protect people at work or when receiving services is generally permissible as long as it, oh my gosh, I can't read my own writing, huh, as long as, um, things are put in place to ensure people who are unable to be vaccinated for, for COVID-related reasons are reasonably accommodated. So there are those, those, um, um, accommodations being made for people who are, you know, medically unable to, to be vaccinated. But, uh, the Human Rights Commission has agreed with the, I guess, the overall benefit to the public. And, um, yeah, our next meeting's tomorrow, so we'll decide at that meeting if we want to stay with bi-weekly or, um, at this point in time, um, we were kind of keeping it open that if things started to get worse with the schools or, or any other reason, we may meet more frequently, but, uh, fingers crossed, so far so good. So, um, I think that's all I, I have on that. And unless there's any questions or anyone else has anything else that they know of that I haven't touched on?
Any questions from council? I don't see any, Gail, so thank you so much and, um, people can go online to get their vaccine proof. And we'll probably have a bit of a discussion about that at our CCG meeting tomorrow, so. Okay, I have no questions for you, Gail, so we'll move on to 16.2 Indigenous Land Acknowledgement. And Gail, I'll leave that, uh, do you have any comments?
Um, just to say that, um, council had asked me to do up a, a draft, uh, to look at. Um, I did keep it fairly vague because we, we were going to leave the consultation, um, and more sort of specific, um, excuse me wording for the Aboriginal elders committee. And that's going to be formed, that was listed in your strategic plan. So it was purposely left sort of, sort of vague, so that's there for your consideration tonight.
Okay, if I, I can get a mover and a second or, and then we can continue the discussion? Belinda? And Drago? Moved by Belinda Kiss to Maker, second by Drago Stefanik. Be it resolved that the council, the corporation, the township of Hornpane does hereby adopt the attached Indigenous Land Acknowledgement Statement until such time as the Aboriginal Elders Advisory Committee listed in the Strategic Plan of Council, Planning to Succeed 2020 to 2023, is established and can complete consultation with the appropriate Indigenous communities to further enhance the statement. And I have to say, Gail, I really appreciated the way the resolution, the motion is written, and I think the land acknowledgement, like you had said, is open, but it fits for our needs, so that people, I think with all the discoveries that happened this year, that it's beneficial to show that we care and we're, you know, we got bogged down with COVID, it wasn't that we weren't planning to do anything. So the land acknowledgement that is attached says, "We would like to begin by respectfully acknowledging that the land on which we gather here today is the Treaty 9, 1905 to 1906 Territory, the traditional lands of Indigenous peoples, and as we work towards reconciliation, may we all live with respect on this land and live in peace and friendship with all its diverse peoples." And if council, is there any further discussion on the motion? Okay, I'll put that to a vote. Thank you for your work, Gail, I put that to a vote, those in favor? And that is carried. Currently, to Gail, our procedure bylaw is still open. We're still working on the final of that, so it would be included in the procedure bylaw, that it would be read?
Yes, we'll let it in for sure.
Okay, good, great. Okay, 16.3. If I can get a mover and a seconder, please? Sorry, I'm first of all, that's a bylaw, so it'll come after the bylaws. If Melissa, would you like to speak to your report? Oh, she can't speak to her report. We're having technical difficulties.
So she said she thinks she has covered everything in her report. Feedback myself, but she'll take questions, and just to note that the bylaw is not actually on for passing tonight. It was just for discussion, and then we can prepare whichever option council would like for the next meeting.
Okay, sounds good. So if you look in your agenda package under 16.3, you'll see the report there from Melissa. The only question that I have from the, I would agree with option number one, and the only portion that I would like to see is how that implementation affects into 2022 from our Water and Sewers Rate Study Guide? Because during that time when we were talking about the, when we took the presentation of the Water and Rate Study Guide, we talked about that there would be more further consultation at budget time for our water and rate waters, or sorry, our water rates? So there'll still be our regular water rates discussion and how we're going to fully implement that plan?
Yes, for sure.
Okay. So I open up the discussion to council, so we can give direction for what would be prepared for next meeting, councillor Stefanik?
Yeah, to you, Mayor, thank you. Thank you, Melissa, well done report, which I couldn't find, but I read it and analyzed it really quickly. I thank you for the option one, two, and three. I'd like to hear the treasurer's recommendation of, one, I realize it's options, but what is her take on the recommendation that would be best for the municipality as a treasurer? Thank you.
Gail, can she answer that through you, please?
Well, she would recommend option one, and if that's what council wanted, she could do a full analysis of the accounts to show the difference from what it would be now and what it would be in 2022 for the October meeting. Can I get that right?
Yeah. I'm in agreement with that, councillor Stefanik, does that satisfy?
I thank that treasurer, and I concur with her recommendation.
Any further discussion from council? Councillor Kiss to Maker, Belinda?
I definitely agree with option one.
Option one, okay. Okay, so we're all in agreement, consensus on option one. Peter, you're as well, I see you saying yes, one. Okay, so, and that's a great recommendation from the treasurer to have those pieces of data to show for council as well, and we look forward to that. Thank you. Are we, does, can the treasurer go ahead and consult with the 27 affected property units before that meeting? Without a resolution, can that happen, or should we be passing something to allow that to happen?
No, I think, we've had communication with some anyway, so I think that's fine.
Okay, great. I just want to make sure you have everything you need. Okay, moving on to 16.4, if I can get a mover and a seconder, please? Drago and Peter? Moved by Drago Stefanik, second by Peter Kiss to Maker. Where is economic development? Is the intentional practice of improving a community's economic well-being and quality of life and includes a broad range of activities to attract, create, and retain jobs, and to foster resilient pro-growth tax base and an inclusive, sustainable economy? And whereas increased economic development contributes to a more sustainable existence for communities and broadens the tax base, leading to a more affordable and more equitable apportionment of municipal costs such as property taxes and water and sewage charges amongst rate payers? And whereas more affordable living conditions combined with increased services and opportunities will make rural northern communities more attractive to residents, investors, and visitors? And whereas economic development officers play a central role in leveraging the resources of a community with stakeholders such as businesses, utilities, educational institutions, chamber of commerce, banks, real estate developers, local groups, foundation, NGOs, and more to support economic development? And whereas economic development officers work to bring prosperity to their communities by developing and executing strategic plans for robust, resilient, and inclusive economies through such things such as business retention and expansion, marketing and attraction, entrepreneur and small business development, technology-based development work, real estate development, workforce development, strategic planning, disaster recovery and resilience, and attracting foreign direct investment? Whereas the council, the corporation, the township of Hornpane champions economic development as the key to success and the place where small northern isolated communities such as Hornpane need to start to effect real change. And whereas it is well-known fact that many rural northern communities are negatively affected by capacity shortages, which are a primary barrier to growth, efficient service provision, and emergency management, response, and recovery. And whereas there are currently no long-term funding programs available to assist small rural northern municipalities who otherwise cannot afford to operate an economic development department for the long term without raising taxes yet again, making it difficult to sustain growth and autonomy, as well as attract and retain residents and investors. Therefore, be it resolved that the council, the corporation, and the township of Hornpane does hereby appeal to the province to consider creating a renewable five-year program for the sole purpose of supporting economic resilience, community revitalization, and increased capacity for economic development that would cover a reasonable salary and wages for economic development officers for small rural northern municipalities that are able to meet criteria based on such things as annual operating budgets under a specified amount, a minimum ratio of commercial-industrial versus residential assessment, a minimum population level, example, 20,000, and/or any other criteria that may pose challenges to such municipalities. Be it further resolved that such a program would be available to municipalities that have successfully completed the three-year program through FedNOR's Community Investment Initiative for Ontario, and have proven the value of an economic development officer in their community. Be it further resolved that this resolution be forwarded with a letter to the Honorable Doug Ford, Premier of Ontario, the Honorable Vic Fideli, Minister of Economic Development, Job Creation and Trade, the Honorable Greg Rickford, Minister of Northern Development Mines, Natural Resources, and Forestry, for their support and action into the following, for their support and advocacy, Michael Manta, MPPL, Algoma, Manitoulin, the Northeastern Superiors Mariners Group, Northeastern Ontario Municipal Association, Northwestern Ontario Municipal Association, Algoma District Municipal Association, the Federation of Northern Ontario's Municipalities, Destination Northern Ontario, Algoma Kinewabidi Travel Association, Northern Ontario Business, Northwestern Ontario Association, Associated Chambers of Commerce, Sioux Area Chamber of Commerce, Timmins Chamber of Commerce, Lakosh Foothills Chamber of Commerce, Kirkland Lake District Chamber of Commerce, Elliott Lake District Chamber of Commerce, Nordaski Regional Economic Development Corporation, Dubreville Economic Development Corporation, Superior Regional Economic Development Corporation, Economic Developers Association of Canada, and Economic Developers Council of Ontario. Any discussion on the motion, council? The only addition I would have, and I just thought of it tonight as I was reading, was if we it's imperative to meet the labor shortages that are happening across Ontario, and if we had that language included as well as attraction, attracting, the last whereas on the first page, as well as attract and retain residents, investors, to fill the labor shortage, or something like that, to have that wording in there? Does it fit there, Gail? You could do it much better than I can.
Yeah, I think that's a really good idea.
Is that the best place for it? And the other thing that I'm thinking, just as I was reading, do we want to do a news release as we send this out? Because when I was reading the places we were at, Northern Ontario Business, we might end up getting some good response from media that this is a need.
I think they would definitely be interested, for sure. That's, it's not a bad idea. Can I just, can I just take a look at this tomorrow and add that in? It probably does fit there, but I'd rather read it again properly and add it in, as long as you all agree that it's going to be added in, is that okay?
Is that permissible of council, that we'll pass the resolution with the addition of labor shortages vocabulary added to it? Okay. Okay, I put that to a vote, council? Those in favor? And that is carried. And moving on to 16.5, sorry, council committee updates? And we can do a roundtable? Anything happening out there with your committees, or committees even meeting yet? Councillor Kiss to Maker, Peter?
There was one hospital board meeting, but I could not attend it. Higher engagement, so that's all that's going on on my side.
Okay, you cut out a little bit, Peter, so there was one hospital board meeting, nothing else is meeting right now, but you weren't able to attend, is that what you had said?
Correct, yes.
Okay, okay, great, thank you for that. Any other updates from council? Councillor Stefanik, go ahead.
Yeah, to you, Mayor, thank you. The PHU Board of Health, we already met, a meeting tomorrow, PHU, the Finance Committee. Also, through you to administration, I'd like to have a written report on central Ontario, what was done, the update, so I could share what I got a call-up meeting with my other committee, I realized it was a crazy summer with all the works and stoppages and COVID-19 and all the extra effort that the staff put in, so I'd like to have the next meeting so I could to touch base and see, put some real strong movement for this at our committee as a group, and also some solid plans, and let's finalize this next spring, and let's get it done once and for all, please. And the final comment, we really gotta, I mention this almost every year, think about our municipal office. Now, the library, we know was going to the arena. My understanding was 2024, 25, the municipal office has to be fully accessible. I think we should start seriously discussing it, maybe end of this year or in January. What is our plan of action? Are we making it accessible? Do we build another municipal office? This is very serious stuff. We have to be accommodating for all the people that have different challenges, maybe visual, physical, and I mentioned every year, and I think it's time that, let's not leave it for the next council, let's have a plan of action, and they could go further, and then administration will also see the blueprint where we're going to be heading. So I respect the last administration to look at timeframe, and the this year meeting or beginning of next year meeting, and I thank you.
Thank you for that, councillor Stefanik. Just some clarification, for the Centre of Ontario, what exactly are you looking for from staff? Is the?
Yeah, I'm looking for, the engineering report was done, because I wasn't bothering them, engineering report, was it completed, the cost of the report, was any work, actual work being done at the site? And those are the things I want to share with my other committee, because I don't know, and they don't know, and then we'll move forward as a committee to see what the plan of action will be for next spring, and we'll make some solid recommendations, and proceed from there, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So an update of where the?
Yes.
Like a snapshot?
Yes.
Okay, councillor, Gail, go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify that that will be on the October meeting, because our next week's meeting agenda goes out Friday, and we're trying to sort of just leave that for the statutory meeting for the official plan. And that will be sufficient time to?
I thank you for that.
Okay?
I respect that, I thank you.
And also, I have an accessibility webinar coming up in the next few weeks, which is more, more, you know, just about compliance, but I agree that we need to start thinking a little more, you know, seriously about that as well, so I can schedule that into a future meeting, for sure.
Okay, thank you for that, councillor Stefanik, thank you, Gail. Any other comments, committee meetings? So as you know, I have been away for, basically since August, right after our August 18th meeting. I have to say, I did enjoy my time away. I learned a lot, and I didn't get much vacation in, but I still have 10 days, so I am going to be spending some time with family. I am right back at her, though, for the township, so tomorrow, of course, I'll be attending the CCG meeting, and looking forward to seeing the people there. and looking forward to seeing the people there. On Saturday, we have the Algoma District Municipal Association meeting. So that will be happening. Next week on Wednesday, or sorry, Thursday and Friday, I will be in Toronto attending Good Roads. Tomorrow, I will be interviewed about our internet situation in our community. And the schedule's filling up. So Gail and I had a discussion today and we're four days are already booked in November. So vacation time's over. That's all I have to report and thank everyone for holding down the fort while I was gone because I really did take the time away, as you all know. So until next year, I guess. And that's all that I have. I would like to, we do have a few other items on our agenda. I think it's 10 to 8. I think we could probably press through and finish up our meeting instead of having a break if everyone's okay. I'm seeing agreement. Okay, so we have bylaw, the transfer payment for the Culture and Recreation Stream. If I can get a mover and a seconder, please? Peter? And Drago? Moved by Peter Kissamaker, second by Drago Stefanik. Be it resolved that bylaw number 1872, being a bylaw to enter into a transfer payment agreement between the corporation, the township of Hornpan and Her Majesty, the Queen in Right of the Province of Ontario, represented by the Ministry of Infrastructure regarding the Investing in Canada Infrastructure Programme, ISIP, Community, Culture and Recreation Stream, for the completion of upgrades and expansion at the Hornpan Community Arena. Be hereby read a first and second time and be considered read a third time and finally passed. Any discussion on the bylaw? It's a happy day. Those in favor? I see Belinda smiling. Did you raise your hand, Belinda? And that is carried. Okay, and now we move down to 23, to the confirmatory bylaw. If I can get a mover and a seconder, please? Drago? And Peter? Moved by Drago Stefanik, second by Peter Kissamaker. Be it resolved that bylaw 1873, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at the regular meeting held on Wednesday, September 22nd, 2021, be hereby read a first and second time and be considered read a third time and finally passed. Those in favor? And that is carried. And if I can get a mover and a seconder to adjourn, please? Drago and Belinda? Moved by Drago Stefanik, second by Belinda Kissamaker. Be it resolved that council does hereby adjourn this regular meeting of council held on Wednesday, September 22nd, 2021 at 7:55 PM. Those in favor? And that is carried. I didn't actually see your hand, Drago, but you're smiling.
Yeah, that's what it is, yeah. No, actually, I'll tell you why I was smiling. Did you enjoy your $50?
Oh, I didn't receive it yet, but thank you, yes.
See, honesty is best policy because it was sent to me, right? They would have no clue. But soon as I saw that, I said, courtesy, respect, I gotta get it to you, see?
Yes, I win when I attend conferences. So I attended on Drago's behalf and I won a $50 gift certificate.
Get me a vacation. You're just a champion, okay? So relax.